All right, everyone, we're gonna call the meeting to order. First be a roll call. We do have one member absent, Daniel Watts is absent tonight. Everybody else is present. Uh, please stand. Please, please.
Good pleasure. ... United States of America and the Republic where we stand on a nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go to the agenda. Uh, Seagis on those item one for the site report, Rattle Creek, the bond intention has been removed.
Part three B, yeah.
I'm sorry, the part, I'm not counting it. The part three B. So, item one was removed.
Yeah, this was approved last plan commission taken to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. They still had some work to do. Uh, they have completed that work for Public Services, so we'll go back to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay. Any other changes? All right, uh, next will be approval of the meeting agenda with item one hanging out. Any questions or comments? If not, we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, next, uh, approval of the prior minutes from the March eleventh meeting. Any questions or corrections with these? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And it's approved. Next, we'll go through the individual review of agenda items. There is a public, uh, comment section, but we do have several people trying to speak when we get down to item number five. So, we'll call those names at that point, but any other, anybody want to speak in the public comment? Any other items on that list? All right, we'll move along. Item, uh, number two, Rattle Creek, that's request final subdivision flat for single-family lots. Uh, Thoroughbird Way and Grayson Lane, R fifteen medium density residential. All right, please.
All right, uh, this completes the Rattle Creek subdivision that was approved in two thousand and four. Uh, this is the final seventy, uh, single-family lots. Uh, these will be, this was a R fifteen cluster, uh, development, medium density. Um, so, uh, looking at the flat, there were no changes from the flat to the, um, master plan. There were a couple of lots that were changed, uh, due to sewer, uh, sewer line layout and that kind of thing. But the overall intent of the plan, there was nothing that changed from this final master to, uh, the master development plan. That's in your package.
Anybody here represent this? All right, anybody got any questions? Comments, any? Well, Seagis, you referenced, uh, on the notice there about the deed restriction. Uh, Rattle Creek started about twenty years ago, probably. It looks like it includes a minimum fifty percent brick or stone, uh, what, sixteen hundred square foot minimum?
Yeah.
In the drive.
And that was in the, uh, what you see before you is, uh, in the deed restrictions for pay section, it was like one of the first sections. But the master plan has, is what was approved, it has what's in the deed restrictions, the fifty percent minimum brick and the minimum sixteen hundred square foot lot sizes. Which the developer, the builders said that they would inspect here too.
And most of the homes in there, of course, are built way over the minimum. We have that sometimes. But is the goal for one or two carterites, or?
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, I think the goal for the majority of houses is two carterites.
Okay.
Is this one of the things, is it front garden space and garage?
No, this will be more, it was, it would be consistent, yeah, before that, so the designer wouldn't, wouldn't be in. It would be similar to what's already there.
And this is the, the last sub?
Yeah.
All right, you have any other comments or questions?
Can I add that, uh, approv- approving the final flat, this is something that was already approved and this is the, the required by state for process that we go through with approving the flat. So, this is again, the entire subdivision was approved in two thousand and four, so we're not adding seventy more units to the, to the city.
Seagis, I think you catch the setback, front setback, do you know what that is on this subdivision?
Yeah. For people fifteen thousand square foot lots, so.
Sure, how high was it gonna be?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five.
What if I put it on me?
So, yeah, this is before the thirty-five foot.
All right. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion to, uh, motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Item number three, uh, Wawa Gas Station, request site plan approval for fifty-nine fifteen square foot commercial building with fuel canopy. Property six, one thousand nine highway seventy-six is on C two general court.
So, uh, this site will, uh, be where the existing, the current day then site is. Uh, the developer will demolish the day then, they'll keep the Mexican restaurant. They said for about a year, roughly about a year, the Mexican restaurant will stay intact while they're demolishing and prepping the site. Uh, and then about a year and a half, they'll, they'll come and, and build the Wawa. Wawa's five thousand, uh, fifty-nine hundred square feet. Um, they're known for their food, uh, on the east coast, just, uh, uh, about that. So, um, they have some, uh, issues that T-Dot, not issues, but T-Dot's recommending some lane storage that they're gonna address when they, uh, as we closer they get to building. So, they'll meet T-Dot requirements with, uh, signal time and lane storage and that kind of thing.
But next question will be gone when they start to build their structure.
Yes, yes.
Does have a unique entrance coming in off of, can't see it. Well, I was lying there, the first one, I was confused, I first thought, that's just a ride-in.
It appears right in.
That's, is there the, are there any of the intersections that really got there, the turn right?
Probably, there's the trucks that are turning, you know, and if they were to back up on seventy-six foot, if you had wide open.
Any other comments or questions? There appears also the seventy-six access to the.
I think, me and the biggie, biggie hears the day then coming down, uh, uh, I don't know.
All right, any more comments or questions?
Can they change the name to Wawa?
Is there someone here representing if there's a question?
Good evening, my name is Al Sahman with S E T, I'm the design engineer on Wawa. Uh, unfortunately, this is a brand name and we've been doing them, uh, all since the, um, actually, they have a couple of locations in Marcusboro and, uh, uh, S E T's in Marcusboro, so they have three locations in Marcusboro. We have a couple of them in, uh, Clarksville now, and we're coming to White House.
Are they open yet?
Uh, they're currently under construction, the approval was last year, so currently they're prepping the site and probably anticipated, uh, opening will be next year or end of this year.
Do you have, do you have us on, White House on your plans and when you might be purchasing the land and when you might be planning on building or opening up your, so, here in White House? Do you have a plan for that?
They're under contract with both properties. Um, I think, uh, that, that approval will be needed before they can close on the property, so once this happens, uh, they'll move forward.
Okay. We have days in there we'd like to see come down pretty quick.
Do you have any more locations in Tennessee besides the Marcusboro and Clarksville? Are there any other locations in Tennessee?
Uh, Clarksville, Marcusboro, and, uh, White House.
There's some of these Tennessee, I think, like Harramun and Knoxville maybe have some.
I would, I, I thought that was fine, I couldn't find anything.
I think they have approvals out there.
I was curious.
They're gonna be everywhere for another.
Yeah. And I spoke with the, the buyer, the seller's agent and advisor, Southeastern, and I keep texting, I guess because the day then was such a hostile, so I keep, I keep talking to him, asking, anything that'll hold up this, this, this deal? And, uh, the last correspondence I got, it was supposed to close the first of, of the month, I think it's pending, uh, pending the, you know, approvals before it closes. But last word I got, there was nothing that would prohibit the sale.
There are two others, one in India Lake and another one in Beachmont.
Okay. With, with Wawa.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, item number four, this is also public hearing, but no one signed up to speak. This is a, a request recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for approval to annex one acre. Uh, one seventy old highway thirty-one W. Uh, it would also be a rezoning, uh, from the current county zoning to some of the residential C two commercial.
Um, so this, uh, Mr. Arnett is here, is present to speak on this. He purchased the property, um, you can see the, the red, red, we can see the, uh, outline of the shaded property. He owned the property where it says adjacent to property zone. He purchased his property and his intent was to bring it in, uh, to be consistent with his other properties. He has a current single-family, uh, home on there which he's renting out, um, but he's here to answer any questions.
I do have some questions about this, please. Um, good evening. Um, so, you are aware that across from you is residential and next to you is residential?
Yes.
So, in future sites, do you have any plans to pair these pieces and sell them as a whole as a C two commercial?
I don't look at the moment, I think my main reason was, um, just for future reference, if for some reason a renter has to leave, I thought about maybe turn it to be able to use for a commercial for office space.
Okay, I mean, that's perfectly reasonable. My concern for future development of this piece would be the island, which has a residential street on the opposite side of thirty-one. The yellow education in the middle is an island that holds houses. And that street is very narrow and undeveloped at this time, so it would really cause a problem for traffic.
Yeah, this property, these two properties, uh, there is a gas easement right down the center, so combining these and doing anything on both of them wouldn't be, really wouldn't be possible. I mean, I guess you could maybe put a apartment lot, but, yeah, it runs right down the center of them, so there's really not a whole lot you can do.
So, your intention right now for this piece is to do what?
Uh, I don't have any intention for it right this second.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a current leasing and, yeah, they're, they're good renters, so I don't have any current plans.
Okay, thank you.
And your business is located in one of those, uh, buildings there?
Yep, yes.
Construction company?
Yes, we're the contractor. And also, we, we, we have like thousands square foot of that building. Most of these are occupied by, just at the moment.
So, the red is the existing C two zone?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? This is a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. All right, no other comments or questions, we have a motion?
All motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve, but, uh, motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
What I'll do on the next item, item five, I'll introduce it, um, let the representative state just remain, then we'll do the public hearing. Everybody agree with that? All right, item number five, it's also a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, this has got several pieces. One, the two annex eighty-five point twelve acres on Bill Moss Road, uh, and preliminary master plan and rezoning from agricultural, of a county agricultural to neighborhood center, plenty development, for two hundred and sixty-two single-family houses and one hundred and three townhome units. And also, it's request amend the comprehensive plan. I think right now, Seagis, good. I think it's a low density residential or single-family and, uh, the request in the high density. So, it's three parts, all of them are recommendations to the, uh, Board of Mayor and Alderman. We have a representative here.
Good evening, uh, my name is Josh Rolland, I'm a Timly Horn, uh, the applicant, and with me tonight is Pat Viedra with L G I Homes, who I represent. And just wanted to give him a moment to make a brief introduction, and then I'll take it, take the microphone back over and do the presentation.
Uh, good evening, commissioners, my name is Pat Viedra, I'm the regional vice president of land for L G I Homes. We are actively building and developing throughout Nashville today, and actually building our first project in White House as we speak. Um, as I mentioned, we're a developer and builder, and so that means we develop about ninety-five percent of the home sites that we build on nationally. And the reason we do that is that we think it's important to build a community. We build for, uh, young families, growing families, mature families, empty nesters and active adults. And what we like about this project is it has, hey, a mix of uses and home sizes and, and lot sizes that would serve a number of different family segments or areas, uh, as, as people grow and age. And we think it'll be a sort of a community for all, all of these. And it is amenitized as such as well. Um, and, uh, and we filled in a lot of amenities into the plan you see here. It is a concept plan, and we know there's possible to refine that plan, or if we're, we think it's a good idea, a good concept. But we're also open to the refinement that may come out of a quality place that, like White House, has seen a lot of development and has done a lot of quality development. So, we look forward to sharing that with you, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Josh.
I have a question before you leave. Uh, you, did I understand that you're building something in White House now, you have a?
Yes, sir.
Where is that, what is that?
Uh, it's called Springbrook, it was a neighborhood that was.
I know where you are.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, um, just a brief overview, but we've, uh, created this project Harvest Park. It's kind of, it embodies a lot of the ideas for the amenities and, and kind of what the place is now, you know, it's a, it's an agricultural, um, piece of land, but it's something that we're gonna, uh, you know, turn into a place that has some of those same types of attributes, uh, as well within the amenity package. Tonight, I wanna discuss, uh, a few things, uh, with you. We're gonna go through the project's site details, kind of the contextual, uh, information around the, the annexation and the comp plan. Uh, we're gonna talk about, uh, some of the specific nuances of the proposal of, of the development. And we're gonna get in detail on the park and open space concepts, and then, uh, hit briefly on the residential architecture as well. As Seagis mentioned, this site is eighty-five acres, we're just north of Bill Moss Road, uh, and just west of, of the interstate. Um, current, currently it's in Robertson County, uh, Zone D, um, so that's kind of, uh, hits on the first request tonight that we're asking for your recommendations, uh, of approval on is, uh, for the project to be allowed to be annexed. This, uh, now, kind of moving on to the, uh, land use character and how it relates to the future land use map. Uh, currently, the, the site is bordered immediately to the south by two mixed-use parcels and then, uh, the innovation zone as well. You know, the city's comp plan has set this area up for jobs and for growth. Um, there's a couple other sizable, um, communities that have also started to take shape on this west side of the interstate. Um, so you can kind of start to understand, um, and you already know, the activity that's happening out here. Um, so, but what that does, it kind of just sets up for, uh, a precedent in this area. Um, as Pat mentioned, their general program of development is to have multiple different housing types within the community so that they can have different, you know, meet different segments of the market. So, that's why tonight we wanted to, uh, share the idea of expanding that mixed-use area that's already shown on the plan, uh, to accomplish that. Um, that's the character policy that allows for the, um, neighborhood center residential pud. And so, that moves on to the second, or, excuse me, the, the third section of the application, which is our, our zoning. Uh, we're looking for the neighborhood center residential pud. Uh, that's gonna allow for some smaller lot sizes, some smaller setbacks on those lots. Um, and, you know, what, what we're able to do in turn by, um, getting more densities, provide more amenities for the community. I mean, these amenities are, are in public spaces, and so, as residents in the area wanna come by and, you know, walk on the sidewalks and walk on the trails and use the playground, it's not amenities specifically for, for this community. Um, just kind of hitting back on the fact that, you know, that the mixed, the request to change to mixed-use from the single-family low-density currently identified in the, in the comp plan is, you know, it's, it's consistent with what's immediately across the street. We see these homes as being opportunities to house future, uh, residents and employees that work in this innovation zone, so it's a, a good location, uh, next to jobs. Couple of things hitting on, um, aspects of, of the pud that are required, you need to be on a, a major thoroughfare, which Bill Moss Road is, is our material, uh, in your, uh, major thoroughfare plan. Um, we need to have available infrastructure, we do have water and sewer right out, outside the front door. There are some, uh, waterline upgrades that we'll have to make in order to, uh, address capacity, but that's gonna serve this community in future, uh, development in the future. Uh, there was another, we performed a full traffic study of the area, we analyzed about six or seven different intersections in and around the site. Uh, the general findings were that, uh, the addition of these units to the area didn't negatively impact any of the, uh, intersections, um, beyond where they're at today. There was one intersection, uh, at highway seventy-six and Pleasant Grove, wrote that today, prior to any new, uh, development in the area, is currently operating at a level of service that's unacceptable. I think at the, you'd wanna be C and above, A, B and C for a, uh, intersection that's operating, um, at an acceptable level of service. So, that was, you know, one of the things we wanted to offer tonight, we can contribute to that intersection. I mean, understanding we are adding trips to the area, we are adding stress to the infrastructure from a traffic standpoint. So, um, while it may be a pre-disseminated issue, we wanna, um, you know, put that, uh, discussion on, on the table tonight, so we can, we can contribute, uh, to that proportionally. And so, jumping into the, more of the details and the nuances of the proposal, again, we've got eighty-five acres, uh, three hundred and sixty-five dwelling units. That's just north of four units to the acre. We've got two different single-family lot sizes, uh, a fifty-foot wide and a forty-foot wide. Uh, we have about twenty-five percent of our units are in that larger size, about fifty percent are in that smaller size. Uh, and then we have a hundred and three townhomes that are tucked, uh, closer to Bill Moss Road, uh, on the southeast part of the, of the development. You see a lot of green around the fringe and the edges, we've got a couple of, we've got, we've got a stream on the, on the east side, we've got a couple of small, uh, weather conveyance, uh, reaches that go up into the property. We've got one in the north as well that has some small weather features. Those are all protected and buffered. Um, and you can also see scattered about, we've got parks for every neighborhood throughout the development. We've got, uh, four programmed parks and one passive park in the far north. We're also proposing, uh, trails and, uh, open space paths along Bill Moss Road and in the, uh, preserved open space area in the southeast corner. We'll talk a little bit more about how that's specifically programmed. Um, open space is, is a big deal on this site, uh, within the neighborhood center residential pud. Uh, when you're in that four to six unit per acre category, you need to have at least thirty percent open space. The site is currently at forty-four percent. Um, six point two acres are the programmed park areas that I mentioned. Uh, the minimum requirement in the neighborhood commercial resident, neighborhood center residential pud is, uh, four point two acres, so we're got a couple extra acres of programmed open space. I'm gonna walk you quickly through our four themed park areas. We've got our, our entry play and sports park, which is the largest park, uh, in the south and middle of the property. We have a nature play park, which is in the woods over on the southeast corner, um, kind of skirting original line through there.
Excuse me, are the play areas that are allocated as a play area, a playground or an open space area?
Playgrounds with play equipment.
So, they're playgrounds with clay equipment, do you have samples of that?
I do. I got it on the next slide here. Um, we have a harvest garden park, and that's, as Pat mentioned, you know, we have amenities that are, are tailored towards different market segments. So, if you've got empty nester that might wanna be in a townhome or a smaller single-family lot, this will be, you know, their park of choice. We, we do show pickleball courts in the, uh, main active park, but we're also gonna focus kind of harvest garden and harvest, uh, pavilion in that, in that park. Then we also have a, a, a large dog park in that northern pocket park that'll have, uh, fenced in areas for two different sizes of dogs. So, I'll quickly go through those. This is that central park in the south, uh, center of the site. On the right-hand side, we have a couple of bocce ball courts, a shade pavilion and three pickleball courts. Uh, this is where the main male kiosk with some dedicated parking is located. And then we also have a large, uh, playground facility with, um, play zones for each age group, you know, they like to, um, kind of segment the age group, three to five and five to twelve, so we're, we've got spaces allocated for that. Any questions or comments?
How many open spaces would you say that accommodates?
How many?
Open spaces for parking?
Uh, right now, I believe we have about five, but this is your typical, um, local street section that does already accommodate for on-street parking. So, the entire, you know, loop of the, of the park has, um, parking available on-street. These are actually kind of carved out to get them a little further off, off the road. But, um, and, you know, there's other options, there's plenty of area in this park that we wanted to do a dedicated parking lot, or I'm kind of trying to read into your question a little bit.
Well, my question is, you indicated that you'll have public access to these spaces. However, they don't really have a volume that accommodates public parking. We have a huge number of citizens in our city, and should a quarter of them decide on one day that they wanna take advantage of your facilities, there's nowhere for them to park, bombarding your residential street. So, that's my concern.
That's understood. I think if, if I were to do some quick math around the, the outside of the park itself, parallel parking spaces, or in the parking, probably up, you know, between thirty and forty spaces lining up. But if you're, I'll make you know to your point, we'll think about that.
They need to be public parks or is private?
I mean, they're, they're not gonna be gated in this, but, you know, it's not gonna be, we're not asking the city to own and, and maintain these parks. Uh, this is our nature play park, which is, uh, in the wooded area. There's this, uh, nice original line that kind of runs out in between Bill Moss Road and a drainage that we are, um, preserving in that area. We're, uh, showing a interpretive nature trail that skirts out, and then we're showing kind of a, a, we're calling it our nature play park, but it's a little woodland playground. We're looking at more naturally themed, uh, play equipment there with, um, you know, logs and steppers and, uh, more kind of natural wood materials for that play equipment. It'll be a picnic pavilion in there and interpretive signage and theme areas, uh, in the wooded space. Uh, this is the harvest garden park. Uh, we've got a, kind of a fan-shaped area of raised garden beds, and these would be maintained and irrigated, you know, and irrigated so that residents could come in and plant vegetables and, uh, help kind of grow and maintain that space. Uh, kind of a ranch-themed picnic pavilion with harvest tables there, so, you know, a great place to entertain and to have, um, have picnics. And then a more path of open lawn, uh, next to that. And then our last programmed space is the, is the dog park. Um, we've got two different, it's in separate areas for dogs. Again, it's, a lot of times you want to take your small dogs into a small dog park area and a, a larger space for big dogs. Any questions about the open spaces before I just kind of move into the architecture?
It would be nice to see a larger community garden type feature that the public could have access to, or perhaps rent space for. It would also be nice to see the trail that was in the facility encompass the entire community, allowing others to access it. Because the way that you have it now, it's quite limited.
So, you, you're looking to see the trail that kind of borders the entire circumference of the project?
Yeah, something that other people can utilize besides the, is the three hundred and sixty-five dwellings. I think it's very monopolized in certain segments of the community, and you're looking to put a very large piece of our community under, uh, residential dwellings. without consideration of the fact that we would still like to use this area as private space. Walking, biking, gardening, preserving the land for use of the community.
I appreciate those comments. Well, as Pat mentioned, we're here to listen tonight as much as we are to present. So we welcome any and all comments. We're open to making changes and coming back and showing you that we're listening. My last slide is on architecture, which these are the three product that's being presented. We've got a wider forty-foot wide product that has both ranch and two stories. All of the single-family homes have two-car garages. In the top-left corner, the thirty-foot wide product that has a two-car garage that sits on the forty-foot lots, the two elevations in the middle sit on the fifty-foot wide lots. And then what's not represented accurately on the townhomes is that our end cap units are proposed to have two-car garages. So we've got twenty-foot wide units in the middle and a twenty-eight-foot wide unit on the end. So you can have a two-car garage unit on the end and a one-car garage unit on the middle units. Each of the townhomes has a full-length driveway out in front so that there's parking in the garage and on the driveway as well. It's in addition to these, the townhome area would be private streets. And so there's a smaller street profile in there, but it's, meets all the fire truck and safety turn requirements in there as well. So with that, I'll jump back to the main master plan and open it up for additional questions and comments. We appreciate your time tonight and respectfully request your recommendation for approval.
Before we start, I think we're going to do a public hearing for a portion of it, then we'll have you all open. All right, I'll read you things out. You can ask, you know, three or four minutes of your comment.
Here.
Is that you, Thomas? Okay, it's Thomas, all right.
Sorry about that.
Oh, you're fine.
My name is Steve Thomas. I'm at seven-nine-five-nine Bill Moss Road. I'm on the Pleasant Grove side of sixty-five on the first property myself from the sister lot. In complete transparency, I would prefer not to have another development on Bill Moss Road. But that's selfish. I also question whether this is the best use of this property. I question the geometry and geography of it. Is it even possible to make Bill Moss an affordable and safe drive from this place to Pleasant Grove? I know that the proposal that you often have mentioned about making improvements to the intersection at Pleasant Grove and Seventy-Six, that's down the road. I think it's going to start in a year. It's just a matter of volume and capacity. I just don't feel this is the best way to use this property. There could be some other wonderful ways to use it. I'd like the rest of the property compared to how it was home to place there. I have no objection to having residents there, just not this.
Davis Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, Lord, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Davis Taylor. I live at seventy-nine-zero Bill Moss Road. Have been there for thirty years, since ninety-four. This proposed development borders my property on two sides. I also have a court order easement right through the middle of this property that has not been addressed to me personally or that I see in these plans. I do not feel that this is a good development for the City of White House. Considering, if you take Bill Moss Road from the interstate to Pleasant Grove, there is one piece of property residential that's currently in city limits and then it joins the sewer treatment plan. Everything else is within county. They have Bill Moss Road address, not county hollery, which only has access to Bill Moss. The majority of homes through that area all have at least an acre. Most have five acres property with them and are nice-sized homes, limited traffic compared to what's going on the other side of the interstate, which we have a development now of Bill Moss. This to me is just not a good fit. I'm not against growth, although I do not care for my property to be annexed. I have forty acres in behind here. We like to shoot, we like to hunt, we like to do different things, which, broadly in the city, would evade any of those pieces. So that's one reason that I would not want my property annexed. My biggest concern is with my easements. And I said, this has not been addressed in any of these plans. Honestly, this is the first I've seen of this plan. And if not for the sign at the end of my driveway saying there was a meeting tonight, I would have had no notification of any of this.
What type of easement do you have?
It's a court order easement for my driveway. My waterline runs down the middle of it. And then there's also an eighteen-deep fiber line that runs from the street down the house. And that easement, I believe, would have been my speed, was when it was ordered.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Morgan Hallway?
Hi, I'm Morgan Hallway. I live at four-twenty Arthas Drive. And I'm here just to talk about the actual infrastructure of the city. We all know that we're getting overwhelmed with all of these new residents coming in. And we need to catch up with that before we approve any other houses coming in because we're in dire need of that, as everybody knows up here, and I know you're working on it. But we need to look at that first before we can approve anything else.
Looks like Randy. Are you trying to read my name?
You on Sunday?
Yes.
Yeah.
And is okay my second type?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. I agree with everyone that is talking stuff with that. I live off of the Bill Moss. I never take that road because I moved the area and that road just like, just confuses me. But I think we need to take care of the other things first. I know that the county is growing and stuff like that. And don't hold it against, I'm from California, so this is very small. I just, I know they're doing a lot of work on this and stuff like that in the project a little bit, but it's too small of an area to have this type of project. And if you add two hundred and fifty homes plus townhouses and stuff like that, you have to have shops to shop in. You have to have restaurants. There's not that many restaurants here. The road, that road off of Seventy-Six and Pleasant Valley, where the schools get out and stuff like that and people come home, the traffic is unbearable. So I have no problems with them finding another area that maybe somebody could recommend. But, sorry.
Amy Bedgett?
Amy Edgitt, seven-four-zero-five-Bowles Road. I just really have three things to say. No one spoke about schools. I know we don't talk about the schools because they're county, but I just wanted to say quick, they were full before. I've talked to Connie Hogan, they're overfull now. There are no plans to build a middle school in White House. There was plans to build one more school, and they had plans for Springfield to kind of uphold with money. But definitely not in White House. So, I mean, and we haven't even put the kids that were already building houses for now in these schools that are already, will attach on more. And then my main one on the road. I have the traffic study from when the parks came, the intersections, ninety-three pages. The main two pages is that it was an F then, not before the parks were built. It even says in here, adding turning lanes. We added turning lanes, and it's still an F with the turning lanes. So there's no changes to it. It's an F already. I mean, everyone knows the roads are bad. That was in two thousand and seventeen, there's been no changes. I mean, we're working on fixing that intersection. But that's maybe a taxpayer expense. So are we going to ask the taxpayers to fix the problems we already have and then just add on to it so what we paid to fix is broken again? I mean, if, if for some reason you really want to develop it right now, I'd say wait until it lights in, do a new traffic study. And if by chance it's a B, something that we can accommodate another subdivision for, then great. But right now it's an F, and it's going to be an F for a while now still. So I guess, and I didn't even think about it till they spoke, but Bill Moss is so narrow there. I mean, that would have to be improved. I would assume, like you've done in the past, that you would make the developer improve that. But our main concern on our two horse roads is Seventy-Six and Pleasant Grove. And then they also sit down Calista, which is already overran, so.
Thank you. Randy Lawyer? I don't know if I pronounced that right.
Even if she is from California. My name's Randy Lawyer. I live at seven-eight-one-zero Bill Moss Road. I've developed the thirty-six acres next to this property. Built my own personal home on eighteen acres of it. And what everybody else said, I'm a local realtor. I would love to see that many houses come into town. But the road itself, the sewer and the water, we looked at this property to buy and develop, was way out of cost range for us to do. And we already had trouble getting the water to the six, seven lots that we got to develop with thirty-six acres next to it. The road on Bill Moss Road, and many have mentioned, is so windy. And the water drains that comes off that southeast side of that property, where they are not developing, continues to flood over that road. And we've had many, many water breaks there on that road. It's very bumpy. The county had just redone it before all those breaks happened. So that would be my number one concern is that windy road. Anytime that there's a shutdown at Seventy-Six and Union Road or any of that, that is the main throw back to Seventy-Six and around it. We have trucks get stuck there constantly, which stops up that whole Bill Moss Road. So, you know, again, the road itself is just not sustainable. We currently have, right now, just with Jackson Farms, it has been approved at four hundred and twenty-eight homes. Calista Farms at three hundred and forty-three homes. And then Townhome Development for forty-five units. None of those cars were included in the traffic study that they did whenever they did that on Bill Moss Road and Pleasant Grove Road. So you add those twelve hundred, fifteen hundred cars to that study by the time they're done and this development starts. So mine and the seven lots next to us, all are agreement that we do not want to see this property built there. My wife does not want to see those because there's bears that live in our yard that live on that property. So she told me to say that. Thank you very much.
Does everybody have a find it to speak? All right, I guess we'll have to apply to commission and discussion.
You got one?
I have one more, Valerie. I didn't find out about the, they didn't let me tell me about the maintenance. I was late to work today. My name is Doug Prentis, I live on Bill Moss.
What was the name?
Doug Prentis. Doug Prentis. I live at seven-nine-four-nine Bill Moss Road. Part of the problem, part of the stuff they're talking about there, they can't build because the way the road slips down the park, you can't do anything with it. That's why they're putting open over there because you can't do anything with it on that part on the backside. The road is bad, especially on that side where they're wanting to do the open part because that's where it turns, makes a couple S-turn and it goes down across the creek. There's a lot of drains there that come in a couple of times and does some stuff. None of it's really helped. Have had a lot of problems with the roads breaking with the construction that's coming off of Jackson Farm, getting a whole lot more dump trucks, and that's making it a whole lot worse. Like I said, that's, I think you said four hundred homes. It's already going to be, that, where are they going to go? And you're going to put another three hundred and fifty on top of that. It's just a lot of that. The density of that is just pretty much a lot that I don't think is really for an acre, like they say. It seems like it's going to be a lot more than that when you take out forty-five acres for the open and then six for the common land. You've got about thirty, thirty-two acres, three hundred and sixty-five homes. That's a lot of homes. Narrow, I'd say that street's probably not even wider than what's in the park. So if anybody wants to come in to go somewhere, where they can park, can park on the road. They're just going to park on the road.
Thank you. All right.
I'm sorry, wait, please.
We got in here later and did not say.
Can you tell us your name, please?
Yep. All right, so undoubtedly, most of you guys know me or have seen me around. And the reason for me to be here is I have property that joins the track on the entire east side of this development and the very most northern part of this development. And then on the, it would be on the west tip and joining Davis Taylor's. So I have, my wife and I have property that joins this track on a good bit of the boundary of the development. While most of you know me, I have, I have at times sat on the same side of the panel as you guys are, and so I'm sensitive to what you're having to respond to. But also say, because the background of God and what I have had to do in this community has been both developing and building. While I'm not opposed to that for our community, I think the density particularly on this track and the location is a good bit out of place. With that said, if we continue our lifestyle, and that is operating a beef cow farm, my concern is if some children or parents say, oh, that's a cute new baby calf. I've got some cows that are going to eat so much lunch. And I don't want to be in the newspaper for that. Most people think the bull is a problem, but the reality is that's not accurate. Going back to the land use, I've known this property for a long time. And while I think that there is some very desirable uses for that property, and as attested about what I did on some of these jointed property. Larger lots, there's a place for them. I think there's a very good reason and place for high-density housing. I just have a hard time with this location in our community. While I'm not a resident of the city, I've called White House my home for a good long time now and will continue to do so with more, unless we can do that. Hopefully, there'll be some use found for this property that's desirable in a different way of developing it. While I'm sensitive to their proposal, I think they've done a good job with some of the ideas. This eastern part there, as Mr. Prentis has already pointed out, if you look at the topo lines, part of the reason that that's open space is because it's really cheap. And so just the fact that they're not being generous with land use, it'd be tough to use that, if you see what I'm saying, given the topography. Again, I'm not opposed to this community growing. I sympathize with you guys having to make decisions for not only developers that are out of town, but some of us that are local and live here. I know it's a tough choice. So thank you for your time and allow me to speak.
Thank you, David. Did you have a comment?
Thank you. We appreciate everyone's comments tonight. We've been taking notes. The one that stood out the most was one regarding the easement. I want to just make a point in saying that our entry drive follows that easement line. And we do have, it's hard to see, but we have allocated room for a driveway exactly where your driveway is located off of the main street. So it'd be improving the easement.
So maybe within the future fellow driveway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And we did carve out a spot right at the inside of the L there for to connect up with your current driveway. So we did not ignore that. I just wanted to make sure that was on record tonight, that that was something we were aware of and that we had a comment.
We'll go, we've got a couple of questions to ask. All right, guys, you want to kick it off?
I have serious concerns about this type of growth under the circumstances that are setting in right now. We are trying to balance many things that we are essentially fixing from a previous administration. And I respect growth. I respect people wanting to be our And I respect growth, I respect, uh, people wanting to be our neighbor and wanting to join us here in White House. I think you have some really great ideas, I just don't think that there's a place for them at this time here in the city. That's my personal belief.
I do think it's too dense. Um, I mean, there's too many houses for that area, and we got a problem with that road. I don't see adding to it until we fix it, unless they won't fix it altogether, so it's all the cost for it. When you say contribute to the cost, that's kind of a, that's, that's probably a very decisive contribute pattern. And we've had it before with developments since they've run a contribute, and then that's always worked out exactly right. Anyway, I think it's too dense, I think the growth's not large, and like, mainly the timing's not right.
Yeah, the, the timing is the thing for me, I mean, if we, we've got several thousand homes that are approved in the queue that haven't been built yet. And so I, I think we've gotta absorb some of that evidence before we can even, if you had to start looking at new dense developments.
They just, what's the current comprehensive plan, Mr. Mike?
It's a single family load density.
So how many units of that, roughly eighty-five?
Three units an acre.
So it goes up to three?
Three, yeah.
Alright, so that's the comparison. I know in Jerry's report, we're on White House and Wilson Lane and Pleasant Grove Road are the two, were two roads listed. Uh, what's that written there, incredibly?
Cliffs, Cliffs, definitely.
Cliffs, I'm sorry, Cliffs in the area.
We're requiring Jackson Farms to the upside, uh, Bill Moss Road from Calista to the interstate certainly, this side is something that would, would need Bill Moss widened and approved from the interstate all the way to Pleasant Grove Road. If that's, yeah, that would, I mean, I can't imagine, I, I think I listed six projects and several, and three of them, I think, is over net area. And we're just trying to catch up on now, because of the tax figures, the tax increase to get that done, so it's really challenging for us. It's, I mean, it's, it looks like a really nice neighborhood and all, but I, I'm not sure. First of all, annexing that property outside the county, it seems like that's what we would see more in a denser area of our city. Not outside of the farm area, assuming what we're, our comprehensive plan is really trying to keep that in a higher dense, we have lower density areas out there. It's just gonna be more challenging for us.
Can I ask you guys how, how long ago you started planning this, this particular?
It's just been in the last, um, three to four months.
Okay. Did, did you, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but did you, uh, did you get any sense that, that kind of response you're getting is what you would get when you started putting this together? Did somebody not say, hey, they're, they're not up for much growth at this point in time?
Well, we know that y'all really paused it last year. And, you know, we're, we're looking at the patterns that are happening in this area now with the D R Works and Development and the new one that's south of seventy-six. And, you know, this is, it's an innovation zone, it's an employment center that you guys have identified.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we, we thought it was a, it's a, it's a, it's a worthwhile plan, I think, you know, people have commented on that.
The plan's nice, everything you got laid out is, looks well done and, and.
I mean, we've got, you know, mixed use just right across.
Three years ago, everybody would have been, man, that's nice, and we don't really look at that, but that was three years ago.
White House is a very desirable place to live, you guys know why, and it's, you know, beautiful, you have a town, and, uh, you know, we got, L G I is a quality builder, and, and they wanna build more houses than, than White House.
The ma- majority of the people in the community, yes, it is a great place to live, and most of the people want it to remain a great place to live. And there's just so many issues that, that, uh, keep anybody in this group from wanting to see it happen. And I think you'll find out here shortly that, uh, that's the consensus here too.
Appreciate your comment.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy, yeah, we, we had a pre-application meeting, uh, I did give him the temperature of the board and the play of a plan and commission, and where we are at the city. Uh, but, you know, he had, he did his due diligence to, you know, this plan together.
You guys have done a good job, but you, uh, kinda been in the wind here a little bit.
Alright, do you have any additional comments? This is a three-part request. This board will review the comprehensive plan amendment, but the annexation and the rezoning improvement amendment will be a recommendation on to the, uh, Board Mayor and all of them. So, do you have any additional comments?
I think, uh, one of our citizens mentioned that we definitely don't have enough space for the kids that we have now in school. And it does bring a serious valid concern about our schools and the need for additional space and new buildings. And I think until we look at something like that, we shouldn't even remotely consider bringing a new house into the city. I mean, I personally have been in them, I work for some of the county schools.
I tell you, my daughter-in-law is a teacher, she tells me about.
I love her school, but we just need more of that, we just need more space.
Could I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
I mean, I heard that C G U had answered, uh, Mr. Herman's question about the comp plan, what it said that today, residential load. Um, that's, you know, south of three units to the acre, I mean, is, is that something that the city would have an appetite for, a, a larger lot, lower density neighborhood in this area? Would that be?
It would have to be so much larger and so much lower density that it wouldn't be worth doing.
Well, my thought too on that is, I would like to know what they would contribute, when they say contribute, what they mean as far as bettering that road and helping Pleasant Grove Road, and also that, because it seems like sometimes we tend to get short shifts on that kind of stuff.
Well, on the part of the Bill Moss Road that we ran into, is there's a cave at the beginning of my property that drops down, and you can't widen that road there because of, of the entrance to Holly Tree. So going to Calista Road, there's, there's no way you can't go wider because of that, that case, so.
I mean, I think the, the goal is to direct traffic west and south down to seventy-six, and if you can improve that intersection and get a signal there and, uh, that, that.
We're already sort of agreed there.
I would agree with the mayor on that, and we already have, when our homes is gonna, I mean, they're, they're gonna be putting a traffic light in there if we get the lane in place, um, with our pride list. So I think, you know, you're right, it's like, we, we need it now, we gotta need that three years from now, four years from now.
I agree with Mayor's comments, all about timing, and the comment out there, if the roads were approved, the city's trying to approve, it might be a different story.
Right, yeah.
I don't see the townhouses out there either in that area.
Yeah, townhouses for sure, not out there. I think with Lennar, it used to require them to, to reduce their density significantly, but we're, we're talking about nine hundred homes and six hundred, not three hundred homes there.
I think it's a beautiful plan, it's just not for this area. I mean, I look at the aerial photograph and it's, it's agricultural, and that's one house per acre. So to have three, I think, still too much for that area. We've got so much going on out there, and to annex in that size, we'd struggle with the infrastructure for sure. And we just don't have the funds to add three hundred and sixty-five more pieces of property.
Jason, do you know what the county would allow, if they, if they stayed in the county and didn't get annexed in, what would they allow the density to be, or C S B do, and he would know that?
It would be a much lower density.
Maybe on that thing, yeah.
Yeah, if you have a good step system or septic system if they went in the county. Uh, so.
At least acre, at least one acre, I would think, yeah. Part of that.
The ones that I've seen that they're doing, um, it, the decisions they've made on Robertson County side is dependent upon whether they can see, consider the proposal close to the urban center. So is that one close enough to Robertson County that they would allow, um, RP eighty is, is what I've seen them submit, which is a two acre option. And then there, there is like a one acre option. So if they're close enough to a city, then they, they have been approving some of the, the one acre options, so one half, one acre. And then if you are not, if they happen to see some reason that the surrounding zoning, or they didn't consider it close enough to, to White House and whatever the road is, and it's possible that it could be at two acres, that, that's just what I've seen there.
So they could approve possibly eighty homes or forty homes if it's two acres, and we still have that significant impact on Bill Moss Road. Okay, thank you.
Alright, any additional comments? Yeah, I guess our options would be either approval, denial, or if y'all wanna see revisions from the questions tonight tonight, so yeah.
I like the motion, we, we deny. Is that all three aspects of the proposal?
Yes.
Comprehensive, comprehensive plan and recommending on the others. So we got motion to second deny on Thursday, oh, agree with the denial, say, ah, disagree with the denial? Dave, anything else?